To approve first the minutes of the regular common council meeting, our last common council meeting. Motion by Mr. Ritchie is second by Mr. Bobozzo. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried. And then, do we have a discussion? A motion to approve the special common council meeting of last Monday. Motion by Mr. Bobozzo, second by Mr. Cunningham. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Committee reports, finance and insurance. Mr. Bell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the contract for sale for forty-six, forty-eight Front Street.
There's a motion to have the mayor sign the, this was the contract that we discussed on the city-owned building at forty-four, forty-six Front Street. Motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Oney. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? One abstention. So carried.
Thank you. We have a few bills to pay. Some of the larger ones, Frontier Communications for phone services, three thousand, six hundred dollars, forty-four cents. Michael McCann, Legal Services, one thousand dollars. Shackleton Auto Vehicle Supplies, one thousand, nine hundred, seventeen dollars, thirty-six cents. Cisco Food Services, Food for Senior Nutrition Program, four thousand, seventy-one dollars and five cents. TSE Electric and Plumbing, Plumbing and Electrical Supplies, one thousand, nine hundred, eighty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Totals from the General Fund, one hundred, twelve thousand, one hundred, forty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. From the Water Fund, seven thousand, thirty-four dollars and three cents. From the Capital Fund, two thousand, seven hundred, eighty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. A total of one hundred, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred, sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents. I make a motion, we pay those bills?
Second. Motion to pay the bills by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
I have a resolution of the common council of the city of Port Jervis regarding 2015 holiday schedule. Where is the city of Port Jervis' common council? It has recognized the need to schedule holidays in coordination with its existing labor contracts. It is hereby resolved that the common council of the city of Port Jervis approves the following schedule for observed holidays in 2015, and that city offices other than the police and water production services will be closed on those days as follows. Thursday, January first, New Year's Day. Monday, January nineteenth, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Monday, February sixteenth is President's Day. Monday, May twenty-fifth is Memorial Day. Friday, July third is Independence Day. Monday, September seventh for Labor Day. Monday, October twelfth for Columbus Day. Wednesday, November the eleventh for Veterans Day. Thursday, November twenty-sixth for Thanksgiving Day. Friday, November twenty-seventh, the day after Thanksgiving. Thursday, the twenty-fourth of December, one half-day. Friday, twenty-fifth of December, Christmas Day. And Thursday, January thirty-first, one half-day for New Year's Eve. I make a motion, this be approved.
Resolution by Mr. Bell for the 2015 holiday schedule, second by Mr. Bobozzo. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
That's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your next meeting?
Our next meeting is the nineteenth.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put your phone on.
Yeah, I was gonna get it later. Let's see where we have it.
Not the nineteenth.
No.
Not the nineteenth.
You have it on the eighteenth. Eighteenth, sorry. Six o'clock here in the council chambers.
Thank you, sir.
You can come on the nineteenth, too.
I'm on the nineteenth, too, for the ward meeting.
Fire and Emergency Management, Mr. Wallagrosky? Oh, oh, he stepped out. Did he leave, leave, or?
No.
All right, I'll come back. Second call on him. Mr. Siegel, Code and Legislative, please.
Thank you. The last Code and Legislative meeting was held on November the fifth. There were many people in attendance to discuss the parking regulations. I'd like to thank all those people for coming. Based on their comments, changes are being requested of the council tonight to make, make it better for all. It shows the reason why people should come to committee meetings. We did not realize some of the things that brought to our attention by the residents that were here. And based on that, we are gonna make some changes, I hope. There'll be another committee meeting set for this month sometime, so we can continue the meeting that we started because we ran out of time due to the number of people that are here for the parking regulations. And I'll announce that date once we can figure out one that suits enough people on the committee. Also, we're gonna try to return back to the seven o'clock, seven P.M. start time because many people stated they can't come at the five-thirty time, and that's a reasonable request. So we may have to change the date, but if we don't have to change the date, the next meeting, the regular meeting, will be December the third at seven P.M. right here, of course, unless we change the date, which I will announce at the next meeting. So I will announce both the special meeting, continuation meeting probably on Facebook and on the city webpage, and we will let you know if December third date at seven P.M. is still good at the next council meeting. And the code agenda and minutes are on portjervisny.org. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Environmental Affairs, Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mayor. A little update right now, garbage and recycling will be one day late this week due to the Veterans Day holiday. Second order papers will be picked up on Friday, November fourteenth. Bag leaves will continue to be picked up on Monday in all wards until leaf season has ended. They might not get to them all on Monday, but they will get there by Tuesday or Wednesday. Loose leaf pickup will be announced at the next council meeting on November twenty-fourth. Our new street sweeper is attempting to get as many loose leaves swept up as it can in the meantime. Lastly, our next DPW meeting will be Monday, November seventeenth at six P.M. here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. Police Committee, Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Mayor. Police Committee met on Monday, November third. On behalf of the Police Committee, I'd like to acknowledge a job well done by the Port Jervis Police Department in identifying the suspect, apprehending the alleged perpetrator of the strong-arm robbery and assault that led to the demise of the victim, Joseph Kucher. Our condolences to the Kucher family and friends for their tragic loss. And on Sunday, November sixteenth, from nine A.M. to eleven A.M., at the Erie Trackside Manor, there's a breakfast buffet to benefit the Kucher family. The buffet includes fresh fruit, scrambled eggs, Western eggs, sausage, bacon, home fries, buttered pancakes, French toast and bagels. Our beloved resident business owner, Port Jervis, who will all miss you, God bless, fifteen dollars for adults, ten dollars for children, ten and under. All proceeds to benefit the Kucher family. Please call the Erie Hotel at eight-five-eight, four-one-zero-zero to let us know how many Also, the McKeeby and Brink families of the Erie Hotel and Restaurant Tri-State Area Police Agencies, including the Port Jervis Police, Eastern Pike Regional Police, Deer Park, Milford Police, Pike County Sheriff's Department, Orange County Sheriff's Department, and the New York State Police. An honor of our friends of the Pennsylvania State Police, invite the public to a fundraising breakfast to help Pennsylvania State Police Corporal Brian Dixon's children. This is gonna be held at the Erie Trackside, Sunday, November twenty-third, from nine A.M. to noon. Donation is twenty dollars. Corporal Brian Dixon III, thirty-eight, of Dunmore, died September twelfth at the Pennsylvania State Police Blooming Grove Barracks, Lord's Valley, PA. He and his wife Tiffany had celebrated their tenth wedding anniversary on August twentieth. He is survived by his wife, two young sons, Brian Dixon III and Adam Robert Dixon. For tickets, contact Darryl McKeeby at nine-one-four, three-one-six, eight-six-nine-zero, or Dean McKeeby at opteline.net. And again, that's November twenty-third, a Sunday, from nine A.M. to noon. The next Police Committee meeting is Monday, December first, at six P.M. in the council chambers. That's all I have on that, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wallagrosky, we'll move back to you, Fire Emergency Man.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, the Port Jervis Fire Department responded to twenty-seven calls during the month of October. Next, we have for the Fire Department, April, it says every time I get this, it says April twenty-fifth. April twenty-five, fifty-year members. Well, it's November, twenty-five-year members and fifty-year members. Jeff Bowdenseek from Never Sink Engine Company Number One for thirty-three years, Stephen Cobenbach for forty-two years, Christopher Morok twenty-six years, Ralph Hesberger fifty-six years. Delaware Engine Company Number Two, Robert Hicks twenty-six years, Daniel Flons forty-eight years, George Bush twenty-five years, and James Farr fifty-four years. For Excelsior Engine Company Number Five, Frank Fuller Sr. fifty-three years. Tri-State Host Company Number Six, John Olenek Sr. forty-seven years, Richard Opel twenty-six Also, the Port Jervis Fire Department would request that the below-named firefighter be approved for inner department transfers stated. Tyler Kowinski transferred from Howard Wee Engine Company Number Four to Delaware Engine Company Two. Number two, I make that a motion.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Wallagrosky and a second by Mr. Bell for a transfer move for Tyler Kowinski from Engine Four to Engine Two. Discussion?
Yeah, I would like to amend, have him amend that, too, once they receive the letter of good standing for mention for that has not been written yet.
According to this, Mr. Kowinski has been cleared of all obligations to Howard Wee Engine Company.
I need a report. Do you want that? Get the letter. It's fine.
I'd like to continue the motion. If you want to amend it.
Okay, I'll amend my motion. Well, Mr. Siegel would know that because he is a member of that company, so.
I'll write the letter. If they've approved it at the thing, I'll write the letter. Let it go.
My motion stands?
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
Also, the Port Jervis Fire Department requested below-named firefighters be approved for probationary drivers for the company stated. Jennifer Schneider, Delaware Engine Company Number Two. Tyler Kowinski, Delaware Engine Company Number Two. This request was approved by the Board of Officers on November third, two thousand fourteen. I make that a motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wallagrosky, second by Mr. Bell to approve the two probationary officer, driver, excuse me, from Engine Two. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
Just a reminder, the next meeting of the Port Jervis Fire Department Board of Officer, no, yeah, the Board of Fire Emergency Management will be November seventeenth, right following the DPW meeting.
Thank you, sir. Liaison CDA, Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Mayor. The CDA last met on October twenty-second. The pending projects that our director is currently working on is the Whitewater Park. She's working with the Tri-State Chamber on America's Best Communities grant application this January twelfth. Twenty-nine, thirty-one Front Street, working on the bid specs, New York Main Street lead-based paint plan, the CDA commitment letter, and communicating with Charlie Fillion, New York State Department of Housing and Community Renewal. Also finalizing with Mr. Farr, the disaster mitigation submission. There's three proposals, the access road and the acre, permanent generator for the underpass, and moving the DPW offices. Finances, she is finalizing some program delivery fees, and there's the new complete streets application, and a new topic for zoning and the code, zoning for lodging. And I believe she'll probably continue to attend some code meetings to discuss that further. The CDA will meet on Wednesday, November nineteenth, and also in December on Wednesday, the seventeenth, through the holidays, second floor at the Pike Street Rec Center. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. IDA, Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Mayor. The IDA has met since our last meeting, but we are scheduled to meet this Tuesday at six P.M. in the council chambers.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm sorry. Wednesday, the twelfth. Thank you.
ADA, Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Mayor. The ADA met quarterly last on Thursday, September eighteenth. DPW has completed the curb cuts in West End, Port Jervis, Main Street. And the next quarterly meeting, although it was on this month's calendar, is actually to be held in December and announced at a later council meeting. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Housing Authority, Mr. Siegel?
Thank you, Mayor. The Housing Authority last met on October fifteenth. The community removal of one mere renovations have started, and bids are out for balance, and those bids were due back today. And a reminder that the meeting day has changed to the fourth Tuesday of each month, starting in November. Therefore, the next meeting will be November the twenty-fifth at seven P.M. at Hillside Terrace. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wallagrosky, Recreation?
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, November fifteenth, from ten to twelve, and the Recreation Department is hosting Fall Park Pride Day. This park cleanup event will be held at Church Street Park, Foreman Park, and Orange Square. Volunteers are needed, help us rake leaves and clean up the garbage. Take pride in Port Jervis and come join us on Saturday. For more information, contact the Recreation Office at eight-five-eight, four-zero-four-five, or email us at pjrec@frontier.net. The two thousand fifteen youth basketball program is right around the corner. Registration will take place at the Youth Center on Saturday, December sixth, from nine to twelve. Sunday, December seventh, from twelve to three. And Wednesday, December tenth, from six to eight. Program will start on Saturday, December thirteenth. Flyers will be distributed in schools on December first. This program is for boys and girls in grades three through six. Busy Bodies Arts and Craft classes are held at the Youth Center every Saturday morning from nine to ten-thirty, and these classes are free and open to boys and girls in grades K through three. Classes run through December thirteenth. There's no class on Saturday, November twenty-ninth. Please note, must be at the Youth Center, no later than nine fifteen to participate. Youth Center's schedule for tomorrow's Veterans Day will be eleven to three. Schedule for Thanksgiving week will be as follows. Monday, November twenty-fourth, eleven A.M. to five P.M. Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, eleven A.M. to five P.M. And Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, eleven to three. The Youth Center will be closed November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. The Elks Bronx Park Point Peter will be closed for the season beginning this Friday, November fourteenth, and it will reopen in the spring of two thousand fifteen. The next Recreation Commission meeting will be held on Wednesday, November nineteenth, at seven P.M. at Youth Center. Before I finish, Mayor, it's the first I see this, it says that Point Peter will be closed.
Yeah, the back road, you'll still be able to drive up to the back road and walk up to the, up to Point Peter. That'll still be open.
For vehicle traffic, it'll be closed off of the forty-two access.
So you have to come up Reservoir Avenue and park at the bottom of the hill and walk up the old road.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Before Mr. Bobozzo goes to tourism, I spoke with Mr. Bobozzo, I spoke with Mr. Belcher. Mr. Belcher will be taking over tourism after this meeting, so Mr. Bobozzo's gonna do his report, and then Mr. Belcher will take over at the next meeting.
This is the last time, so everybody better enjoy this one, because it's a very good one. With the holiday season comes holiday activities, and the Port Jervis Tourism Board has two of them coming up very soon. On Saturday, November twenty-ninth, will be the Christmas tree lighting at Grave Point. That will be at six P.M. Refreshments will be served, and it should be a good time had by all, as it is every single year. Then the very next day, Sunday, the thirtieth, will be the Kris Kendall Mark. This is the second time the city of Port Jervis has done this. Last year was absolutely fantastic event, and this year it is going to be significantly larger. As of this evening, there are over a hundred vendors, which are now committed and confirmed for the fair. There will be two large outdoor tents that will both be filled. The Erie Trackside will be filled, and we are currently filling up the street very quickly as far as spots for vendors. That takes place, again, only three weeks from yesterday. A fantastic event. Again, last year was the first year, and I had a lot of fun down there. Got a lot of Christmas presents for a lot of family members, got a lot of junk food, which I really didn't need, but made me happy nonetheless. And I hope to see everyone there. It's another opportunity for this city to really showcase what it can do and what kind of community events it can put on. So again, tree lighting, six P.M., November twenty-ninth, and the Kris Kendall Mark from ten to six on the thirtieth of November. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, and a great job. Thank you. We look forward to hearing yours next two weeks, Mr. Belcher. Zoning Board, Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Mayor. The zoning board was scheduled to meet on November fourth, but due to lack of new business, that meeting was canceled. Hopefully, on December Tuesday, December second, we will have some new business on the agenda, and we'll have the zoning board meeting.
Thank you, sir. And Planning?
Planning Board hasn't met since our last meeting, but we are scheduled to meet November eighteenth here at seven P.M. in the council chambers. There'll be two public hearings, one on NSR Auto Sales, which is on Fifty Fowler Street, and the second one is on Ming Moon LLC on fifty-nine Front Street, fast food restaurant. And that, that particular building is the one next to where the Rite Aid was temporarily closed. It's that building in Ming Moon, used to be across the street, they're moving over to that location. So if anybody interested in news, hope public hearings, that's just, it's November eighteen at seven P.M. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Siegel, Plumbing Board?
Thank you, Mayor. The Plumbing Board next meeting is December third at six-thirty. Whether or not we change the vote committee at this point.
And Electrical also?
Same day, December third at six-forty-five.
Thank you. Senior Advisor?
Yes, Mayor. I met with the senior housing representatives and the residents this month. There are no issues to report. We did lose a tenant in Hillside, a long-term tenant, but short of that, there were no other issues. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And anything from Axon City?
Uh, no, we do not have anything from Axon City.
Okay, Under Mayor's.
We do have a cameraman, though. Thank you very much for coming.
I have a few things under the Mayor's Correspondence and Information Update. This week, I will be attending the Grace Episcopal Church at ten fifteen, if anybody would like to join me. That is on Sunday. The ten fifteen Grace Episcopal is on the corner of East Main Street and Seward Avenue. I just wanted to state, I will not be here for the next council meeting, November twenty-fourth. Mr. Bobozzo will run the council meeting, as I will be traveling to Narrowsburg to discuss the Whitewater Park with our Upper Delaware Council. And that, they wanted a report from me on this, so I will not be here.
For the record, we will be going for the record as short as our council meeting ever happened.
Wait till he's big.
I did one in thirty-two minutes. You're gonna have your work cut out.
So, Mr. Conklin, Mr. Conklin spoke about all the great activities that are happening at the school, like, you know, they brought the farm animals to the middle school, which was really cool, and the kids liked to see them. He briefly brushed over the cross-country team and that they were going to Federation this weekend. But I wanted to bring notice that Kobe Lane, he's a senior, ran in the States and won second in the States. So I wanted to bring that out, and great job to Kobe. Congratulations.
Britney got fourth.
Is that what you got? Because I didn't see that. All right, Britney got fourth. I didn't want to say that, but congratulations to you, Britney. Awesome. I have an extensive list, maybe one day this week I'll get it out on Facebook and I'll get it out into our website. But I talk about four-twenty-one-F, and, you know, you go down to see Yvonne Durie in your assessor's office, if you're going to put an addition on your house, it could be an improvement, it could be an addition, we have set up a, kind of like a tax break for that addition. So if you put an addition on, or like I said, you do an interior repair, it has to be about five, it has to be at least five thousand dollars, a five thousand dollar addition or repair to your house. And you can qualify for a exemption percentage on that repair. So that would mean that your taxes, your, your building wouldn't get, it would get reassessed, but you would, that section of the new, new assessment wouldn't go into effect. The first year, you'd get a hundred percent off, the second year, you would get seventy-five, the third year, you would get fifty, and the fourth, fourth year, you'd get twenty-five percent off. So on the fifth year, then you would pay for that assessment. And, you know, it's something nice that would help if you're, you know, if you're gonna put an addition on your house, you're spending money doing that addition or that repair to your house. This is just a, something, little bit, that can help ease, ease that and, and help you save a little bit of money. I have talked about these before, the business contact information sheet and the resident contact information sheet. I get them drips and drabs. Some days I'll get ten fifteen, some days I'll get thirty, some days I'll get none. But, you know, it's all volunteer, you don't have to fill out all the information on it, but whatever information you can, it helps. I constantly have developers coming to seek out the city, interested in, in opening places, but they want to know some of the demographics, they want to know some of the other businesses that are in town, things that'll support them, things that might be competition, I'm guessing, with them. But in, in the residence end, it's a little bit more detailed, it asks about money and family and stuff like, because they, they, they look at the projections for the two, well, they use the two thousand and ten census, but they use this projection in two thousand and twelve, which, you know, I, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but it's, most people don't fill this stuff out, they don't fill out their census, and it, it throws us off because corporations will only go to locations if it fits their demographics, and if you don't fill the, the information out, it doesn't, it doesn't do us, do us any good. Also, at the same time, and this is on the city website, Bon Secor Community Hospital, they are asking for, it's, it's just a couple of generic questions, there's like ten, eleven questions on here, just asking about health care, your needs, what you would like to see. Bon Secor has, has taken that first step in the last couple of months to reach out to the city, to work with the city. You know, Mr. Siegel and I met with some representatives of Bon Secor just this past week, and within a day, they turned around and gave us the answers that we were looking for, like, for, for instance, my, our, some of our issues was, were the smokers that are outside, so we're attempting to address that issue so that, you know, pedestrians or passers, passersby aren't dealing with people standing off the property, because the state law says that they can't smoke on, on the property as far as hospitals go. So we're working on that. If you've seen the, the automatic cross signals that this, the city got through, branched through the county on Jersey Avenue and by the Episcopal Church, they are, they are willing to and are purchasing one in front of the hospital. So where you see two crosswalks, we're gonna get rid of one of them, and there's gonna be one actual crosswalk, and it'll have one of those signals at the hospital, they're gonna buy it, the city in cooperation with them are gonna install it, because our electricians know how to put these things together now. And, and, and so Mr. Siegel also had a few questions for him, and, and it's nice to be able to work with the hospital. You know what? You know, some people are bitter over some of the closings and, and the way the hospital was, was heading in a direction, but it seems like they're making every attempt to, to make the corrective actions that are necessary to be our community hospital. So I want to give them the benefit of the doubt. You know, I, I will tell you, she sits very quietly, but Mary Decker is our local representative from the hospital system, and she comes to every single meeting, she's sitting amongst you right now, and she's listening. She, they want to hear from our residents, they want to know. And this, this, this is something that you can go right on the computer and do, or I have copies, you can come to my office and you can just write a copy and give it back to my office, and, and I'll make sure she gets it. It's totally anonymous also. At our last meeting, after we came out of Executive Council, the, the common council approved up to fifteen thousand dollars to be spent on the repairs to twenty-four, thirty-two Front Street. Now just mind you, we don't own the building, but we need to secure and shore up the building, especially for the winter, concerns that if there was a gust of wind, that the rest of the roof could blow off, so we had that all secured and tied down. I'm happy to say that all the repairs were done to the building that need to be done. It's, it's by no means a fix, and it came in at, at about half of what we had authorized, which is even better. The time's gonna come where we're gonna have to discuss what to do with the building, especially if the bank abandons it. All right, but, but this is at least a viable solution to get us through the winter. It will be inspected regularly, especially if we have a thaw, freeze, thaw, freeze, thaw, freeze, because we need to make sure that the building remains a viable building. But I do have, Mr. Mr. Farr did send you guys all pictures of, of how it, how it is now, and it's, uh, and hopefully, no damage in that area will continue.
He hasn't sent a message yet. Or did I? He didn't send them? Oh, he's did a, oh, dog.
Oh, I'm sorry, sent, sent, sent.
Did you send it to all the council?
No, no, just.
If you, if you could.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I meant to put him on the spot. All right, um, I had my, I had, um, my meeting with my department heads on Friday, and afterwards, I sat down with our assessor, Yvon Durier, and Corporation Council, and I, I had since, uh, every week, every Sunday.